Good morning and welcome to the Clark County Council, Washington. This is a work session at the very beginning of this time period that we have today on the freight rail dependent uses. Now, this is a topic that has been with us for some time in the state, in this part of the state in particular, and it's time for it to come to good resolution. So I feel like this is kind of a beginning in that that work session taking place to where the council can contribute to the solution. This will be followed by the council time per se whenever the work session is over, and then we'll have two or three executive sessions as well. So I guess we can go ahead and begin. And Kathleen, would you take a peek, please, around the hearing room? Are there any special guests there that should be introduced before we get started?
I don't know everybody in the hearing room, but I know there's representatives from the railroad advisory board, and my apologies if there's other special guests that I don't know who you are.
Well, welcome, and we're glad that you're here. So let's go ahead and begin. And Jose, are you going to kick it off, or will Oliver give us some intro remarks? Oliver, would you like to give some introductory remarks?
Yes, I will. Good morning, Madam Chair and Councilors. For the record, Oliver Ojaco, Community Planning Director. Yes, Councilors, I will be the one providing a quick overview, and then from there, I will turn it over to Jose Alvarez, who will go over some of these slides and discussion with council today. And then we have our legal counsel, who will also be responding to questions that councilors may have, and from there, we'll see what the council decides to do. I don't know if the council will be making a decision today or deliberating and then giving us direction after we go to the next steps. But before that, let me go over the agenda for this morning's work session. So first, we will follow up with the March 1st council work session of, March 1st of 2023, work session with council. We'll go over some land use, that is, existing land uses along the railroad. This will give the council an idea of properties along the railroad. We don't have any information about their conditions. By that I mean steep slopes, other attributes to those properties along the railroad. We'll talk about options, the council, I've seen these options before, that was the options that staff reviewed with previous council. And then we'll talk about next step. But before that, let me just quickly talk about the background. By that I mean, the Senate Bill 5515 became effective October 19, 2017. When that bill passed, it was specifically authorizing Clark County and Oakennugget Counties to allow freight rail dependent uses adjacent to short line railroad. The county, in this case, Clark County, at the direction of the councilors at the time, directed staff to begin work immediately to implement the freight rail dependent use legislation. And we began that work as speedily as we can, and in 2018, the councilors at the time, and I believe it was January 9 of 2018, that the councilors at the time adopted the freight rail overlay map. And with that adoption, they also adopted amendment to our land use and the transportation element. And what those policies provided for is how the county will implement the freight rail dependent uses. First, we have to identify where the freight rail overlay map will apply, and then we have to work on how to implement those policies that the council adopted. That was the first phase of the process. And I must commend my staff and our legal counsel, because during that process, there were some who were arguing that we don't have to do anything, all we have to do was come up with a development regulation and call it good. And I'm not going to go into details about how that turned out, but I can say that I was very satisfied in the approach that my staff and council took, because that first phase in the adoption of the overlay map and the policies were not appealed. That is a success. Continuing on, the council at the time directed us to begin implementation of the policies and where some uses may be applied. We started that process with the Railroad Advisory Committee. The councilors at the time added additional members to that group, and they were working on the implementation of the policies and where the type of uses will be permitted. And the council is aware that we did develop a draft development regulations as well as proposed use list, but those proposed use list and development regulations as recommended by the advisory group never saw or never went through a public hearing process. You will see when we get to the options, what the council at the time directed for us to take to the planning commission and have that be vetted by the public. In that process, as the council is aware, everything came to a halt in 2018 as a result of a lawsuit. And with the resolution of the lawsuit, we have begun conversation with the council. This is our second work session with council this spring to continue to see how this bill can be implemented. I must also bring to council attention that because this bill is specifically directed to Clark County and Oakennugget County, Clark County is a fully planning county under the Growth Management Act. So all the goals applicable to or required in the Growth Management Act applies to Clark County, unlike Oakennugget County. This bill is not written for the entire 39 counties in the state, so it's only applicable to these two counties. So there is no roadmap for us to follow to say, here's what other counties have done, and what have we, Clark County, done as a result of that. So this is very complex, if I may say so. I have reached out to Oakennugget County to see what they have done. Nothing. I haven't gotten any response back as to what they have done. So we are, I wouldn't say we are muddling through, but the bill is very complex. There's some folks that interpreted it differently, and there's some folks that, again, interpreted it differently. I've getting calls from some of our community members that the bill says "may." I just want the council to be aware of that. That "may," some tells me, means that the county may not choose to do anything, because the language says the county "may." So here we are. With that, let me turn it over to Jose to go over the, what the council asked of us following that March 1st work session. And I will stop there in case the council has any questions for me before I turn it Jose, you can proceed. Thank you, Councilors.
Okay. Good morning, Councilors. Jose Alvarez with Community Planning.
Could we please turn up your microphone at head?
Is that any better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. So on March 1st, we had a work session, and council asked for several things. They, we wanted to see the draft development use list and development standards that came out of the last contact we had with the council in 2018, legal analysis for extension of sewer, and an economic viability assessment. We did provide the draft development use list and development standards to council, and it's actually March 3, not March 7. And I believe there was a cover memo, all of the, all of the draft regulations, and a letter that we received from the wastewater district, and suggestions they had to edits from the advisory committee recommendations. I think the council at that time wanted us to provide an alternate to the advisory committee recommendations with some of the heavy industrial uses and looking at those as commercial for the planning commission to consider and weigh in on. And so that's what's included in the packet that I sent you. I haven't received any feedback from that use list, and so that's, that's the extent of that. I don't know if Chris was going to address the legal analysis.
Okay. I'm sorry, Jose, what, do you want me to speak to at this point?
The legal analysis?
Of?
The extension for sewer. It's one of the things that council asked about at the March 1st, what the status of that is.
Okay. All right. So, Councilors, this is a question to you, because this will be my legal analysis. If you want me to discuss this in an open public meeting, I can do so, or I can save those thoughts and discuss them with you privately in a setting that would be subject to the attorney-client privilege.
Madam Chair, I would strongly urge waiving any potential attorney-client privilege and having this a transparent and open process. We've talked about the fringes of this many, many times here in open meetings. We've talked about seeking clarity from our legislator, and maybe we'll still do that in the future. We don't have any pending lawsuits right now, so I suggest we have an open discussion here today.
And I concur with that. Are there others who do as well?
I do as well.
Okay, let's go.
All right. Thank you. So the first item I'd like to say, which is consistent with what Oliver presented to you, is that there is no guidance, no precedent anywhere from anybody about freight rail dependent uses. No, there's not an attorney general's opinion. No, the governor hasn't told us what he or his departments think about this. So this is something that we will be learning about as we go to some extent. So that's, that's the first thought. There is a great deal of uncertainty here, partly because the statute itself is, in a legal term, clear as mud. And so you should proceed without deciding that everything is clear, and so this is absolutely the answer. I would suggest a very thoughtful, considered approach. So that's number one. And there is, however, lots of existing precedent on urban services outside urban areas and the protection of agricultural forests and mineral resource lands and critical lands and resource industries. So with regard to the first notion, urban services outside urban areas, the law has been that those cannot be allowed to happen. Urban services cannot be extended to rural or resource lands. And we have actually a Court of Appeals and Growth Board and Superior Court decisions that say so with Clark County being one of the parties. You can't extend an urban sewer line to the urban growth boundary in order to serve land outside the urban growth boundary. That is Dragon Slayer versus City of La Center. Clark County was one of the petitioners against the City of La Center on that. And that's consistent with the statutes and the WACS, all of which were prior to the adoption of the freight rail dependent use statute. So that's the historical backdrop as far as urban services go. As far as the protection of agricultural and other resource lands and critical lands, as opposed to being totally negative, this is totally the other way in GMA. It is mandated that the county protect, maintain, conserve, and enhance resource lands and resource industries. And, you know, there are cases with Clark County as a party that say that as well. So these are not uncertain, but they, they are historical backdrop. And the freight rail dependent use statute, it could be argued, presented, created exceptions to some of those otherwise pretty clear doctrines by amending Chapter 3670A, the Growth Management Act. So part of the issue is that freight rail dependent use statute didn't amend all the otherwise relevant parts of GMA. So it didn't amend the parts that say in the rural lands, you have to protect them, and you have to maintain rural character. It just didn't speak to it, except in that one amendment to 3670A 108, which says that counties may modify their development regulations to include development of freight rail dependent uses that do not require urban governmental services in rural lands. And I believe that you have seen a memo from council for Portland-Vancouver Junction Railroad that says, okay, well, yeah, that might mean what it says, and so you shouldn't extend, you shouldn't allow sewer for freight rail dependent uses in rural lands. I would agree with that. I think that is not permitted by any of the statutes as they now exist, by the historic case law. And when I said as they now exist, I mean as they are amended by 3ESB 5517, the freight rail dependent use statute. So keep sewer out of rural lands. I think that's, that's kind of the bottom line here. The next big issue as to where sewer can be is what does it mean when the statute allows the development of freight rail dependent uses on lands adjacent to the short line railroad? Over the years, there has been, in the county, with the relevant tasks, task forces, advisory boards, commissions, and committees, a fair amount of discussion about what is meant by adjacent. And I can confidently say that nobody knows. So that's an issue that you will need to address and come up with a good rationale for when you decide whether you're going to allow these uses and where. Adjacent is not generally thought of as a budding. So in general, it doesn't mean just that which is right up against the boundary of. On the other hand, is it any property within 500 feet? That might be a stretch. A half mile would obviously be a bigger stretch. So that is, that is a question. And when it comes to putting sewer into those areas, that's a bigger question. One of the themes that I've seen in the pre-existing case law is that although sewer might go to a particular property, if there are properties in between, the sewer might be allowed to pass through them, but not to serve them. So if you're going to put your sewer, you know, from, say, the railroad track to however far out from it, and it passes through more than one property, that I think should not be viewed as legal authorization to connect to everybody on the way. So that's another consideration. And then my last consideration that I would like to bring to you is, well, second last, maybe, the notion of onsite sewer services, so septic. Those are regulated by the Public Health Department, and they do have regulations for septic systems, large septic systems, and so forth. And septic is a traditionally rural method of controlling sanitary sewage. I don't think there's much of a doubt that a septic system is not per se a violation of GMA in the, on resource lands or rural lands. However, there is a Court of Appeals case that discussed plans for a large rural commercial development in what we would call in Clark County a rural center. There's going to be a six acre sewer or septic reserve on the property, and the Court of Appeals struck that down as an urban service. So again, there has to be some mindfulness in applying this so that it is appropriate to the area, because the freight rail dependent use statute, again, did not amend any of the provisions that say you have to protect rural character, nor did it amend any of the provisions that say you have to protect, maintain, enhance, and conserve resource lands and industries. So those are my thoughts, and if you have questions, I might or might not be able to answer them at this moment. And based on your thoughts and questions, I have to say I am working on something in But that, that will go to you under the cover of attorney-client privilege.
Chair?
Yes, Counselor?
I have a question. Thank you very much for that. That's very, very helpful. One thing I'm wondering, because freight rail dependent use is an overlay for resource lands, that resource land zoning is still in place. Is that correct for ag and forest?
Yes, and the current uses allowed in agriculture or forests or mineral lands will not change. So for example, if you're a farmer and your property designated as agriculture, all those current uses allowed in agricultural district will still be applicable to your property. Now, even if the council applies the overlay on that property, the underlying uses is still applicable. The only thing is that this overlay, if it's applied on that property, will allow or permit the freight rail dependent uses to also be applicable to that property if the property owner chooses to either sell or have that property be developed for freight rail dependent uses.
So there could be some level of ag or forestry operation happening, plus the whatever industrial is, is put in there, or it could also be 100% industrial, and it could be still designated ag, but there's no ag activity?
That is correct. However, if it is in an area where more than one property is designated for resource use, the, this is, again, this is pretty clear in the statute, the WACS, and the case law. The development on one property cannot interfere with the uses and industries for resource use on other properties zoned for that.
Thanks. Thank you.
Could you kind of go a little bit more, explain that, what you just said a little bit more?
Rural lands are an interesting thing. They're, they're kind of an absence of either urban designation or resource designation. When GMA was first adopted in 1990, the counties that were required to fully plan, including Clark County, were given a deadline to designate urban areas and resource areas. They weren't given a deadline to designate rural lands, but, you know, there were lots of lands that were neither of those two things, and those were defined as, as, well, they weren't, yeah, I guess they're, they are defined as rural. They're neither urban nor resource. There are many uses allowed in There are many uses allowed in rural lands, including resource uses, not including urban uses. But, like, you know, rural commercial is allowed. There's some rural industrial. There's limited areas of more intensive urban development, otherwise known in Clark County as rural centers, a little pre-existing nodes of development outside the urban areas. But one thing that the statute says, because the requirements on resource land were pretty clear. Development on rural land cannot conflict with or interfere with the resource industries on resource zoned land. So, you know, if there were some form of emission from a, from an industry right next door to some really sensitive agricultural use, that could be a problem.
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions, but I do have comments based on that presentation.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, so first and foremost, this is hard work. And Christine, thank you for your efforts. And I look forward to the, the written product. You kind of lost me after the introduction, and, because I agree with the introduction. There's no precedent. But, but the narrative there from, was through a lens that I could easily view based on your, what you teed up. You know, so as a lawyer, I know you're not advocating for the rail dependent exception to GMA. And that's clearly what it was drafted as. And the first, the first paragraph of the statute itself makes it clear that code zoning, regulatory changes, were all up to the council to move forward to comply with the rail dependent use. It is an exception to the normal restrictions outside the urban growth boundary for purposes of developing and using to its fullest extent the railroad. So, so, and there was a quote in the paper the other day that we're kind of uniformly agree, and staff uniformly agrees, with essentially the legal analysis that you just gave. I would tell you that is, I vehemently disagree with that. Having said all that, the importance of what you teed up shows the ambiguity and the lack of precedent. I don't want to buy another lawsuit. And I, I want to give you a little historical perspective from my, my foxhole here. You know, I, I think that this law has languished since the governor signed it because of a lack of political will on behalf of the commissioners and the counselors, even to this day. The lawsuit was used as, well, first, the council, I think, made a, a wrong decision in the beginning by looking at only half of the short rail. I mean, it's a short rail. It's pretty limited in its capacity for economic development to begin with. Why develop only half of it? That was, that's a ridiculous concept. I'm sorry. Yeah, there are challenges with the steel not being up to code, ties, trestles to the terminus. But that's a grant maintenance operational issue that needs to be dealt with over time to focus on, from battleground down to Vancouver. I think was a, a poor start. So, I'm trying to reverse that and get all the planning to look at all the way to the terminus. Now, I don't want to buy another lawsuit. And we either have this decided by a court, or as I originally proposed months, many months ago, let's, let's ask the legislature to add clarity. Let's get out of this no man's land and, and clearly define what, what this law allows and doesn't allow beyond the urban growth boundary. So, and I still stick to that. Let's put it back to the legislature to clarify this. I mean, in talking to individual legislators that were involved in this, they say this is not an issue. But it is here. And especially if we're going to face the growth management board or lawsuits, it's an issue here. So, I'm going to revert back to that. We need to tee up, a question to the legislature and say, we need some amendments to the railroad dependent law to clarify these legal areas, because we don't want to get into litigation again. And I, the other part of that history was, for me, you know, even though, you know, we had councils saying, hey, we have a new council. Let's suspend this coming January. And then, we got a new council. And then, okay, now we have an operator contract disagreement, potentially litigation. Now, all stop. I had argued against that. And, and, and still to this day, think we're now four or five years behind. We could have continued with community development work despite the lawsuit. And the vague objection was this is somehow going to jeopardize our position in the lawsuit if we continue working on the railroad dependent law. We need, we need to fish or cut bait. So, either we keep the railroad as it is and it just continues to languish, we turn it into trails, or we, we go full steam ahead and put the railroad dependent law into full use. So, that's a political decision today by the council and tomorrow. And it has been since January. You know, who is going to publicly stand up and say, I support the railroad? I will. I support the railroad. And it's, we're just treading water and have been treading water. We need to move forward. So, let me just say a few other points about some of the questions and other prior discussions in the work session we had. Absolutely critical habitat, we're going to continue to protect that. And that, and I understand in later slides, we'll see what a land may be buildable along the railroad. Resource lands, how are they going to be protected? Are there areas of schools, residences, other critical areas where industrial use along the railroad will just not fit? So, it's going to be, and, and the county development did a lot of work on uses. I mean, he did a lot of work on the half of the railroad. Good work. And so, where the friction's going to be is what are the allowable uses? And, you know, in a perfect world, we're going to attract clean industry that pays really high wages and won't disrupt the environment at all. Absent that, we, you know, there are prohibited uses of the railroad. We've got that in place. But it's all about what uses in what locations. And if there are any realtors here or people that have been property owners, you know all about location, location, location. So, that's why we're hoping to see the GIS laydown of what's out there. If there's nothing out there that can be developed in industry along the railroad, then that will inform our decision, whether we just keep it as is or turn it to trails or fully develop them. I think that laydown will also attract prospective developers and inform us as to what's possible as far as economic development for our North County and for the county as a whole. But, but we need to move forward. And if, if, if the decision is we're not going to move forward, then let's just do it. Let's just not go year after year after year of wringing our hands. But one, one other point I want to make is, you know, you touched on adjacency and, you know, for me, I, I think there can be some simple definitions. And that may be one of the requests of the legislature to define it. You know, for me, it's adjacent if, if a rail spur can connect to it. And how long a rail spur? But that, that's kind of detail that needs to be there. And then, that right of way along the rail spur or around the railroad itself could carry sewer lines, could carry utilities. That wouldn't violate putting whole entire systems out into the, beyond the urban growth boundary. And I'm hoping part of the presentation, I didn't see the, look in detail on the slides, on whether or not, where are the proposed sewer systems that are going to be expanded? Where are, where do they exist now? Are any of them adjacent to the railroad? Are any of them easily connected to without building a whole new system? I mean, these, these are all issues that will never attract anyone to build a factory of any size or an industrial use of any size unless we can get these issues resolved. And so, back to my bottom line, we need to tee up the, tee up these issues and go back to the legislature. We should start it right now so that the next legislative session, we might get some clarity. Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor Madhaviji. And one of the big takeaways that I have from your message is for us to consider follow-up on clarification with the legislature. And we would do that, not at this point, but soon, hopefully.
Madam Chair? Could I briefly respond to one comment from the counselor?
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Counselor, you said that I was, I forget how you said it, but it was basically I was presenting as opposed to the freight rail dependent use exception. And that, that's not correct. As to whether the council implements that or not is entirely up to you. And my outlook is that if you do so, you should do so in a way that is most likely to be good, to survive, to, if challenged, prevail.
Yeah, so I just, I have to respond to that. I, everyone looks through a particular lens. I, I mean, completely discounted the lawyers' work for the railroad, got it. I wasn't overly impressed with the force of their arguments either, except as to resource land. But law is, is adversarial. And my comments went to the fact that 95% of your presentation was focused on all the protections that exist that conflict with the rate, freight rail dependent law. Instead of from the point of view, hey, this is an exception to GMA. I mean, it's just a narrative and how you phrase the information that's presented. I mean, I spent a lot of years in information management and adversarial processes. And as a judge, I certainly heard both sides, or three sides, or four sides, or five sides. So, it's, you know, if we had someone from the law firm of the railroad, we would have heard a much different presentation. That's, that's what my comment was geared to. Not that you have a policy decision here or stake in it. It was just kind of the frame of reference for how you approach the issues.
With that, I would like to explore something with you, Chris. And that's the aspect of septic and sewer. Considered as different, but entities that are often found in areas that are comparable to what we're discussing now. I, I don't know about you all, but until I'm, we move to the home that we're currently in, we always had both because we were in a situation where having both septic and sewer was the right thing to do for us. So, what I'd like to explore with you, because septic is a traditional means for controlling water and, and doing what it needs to do in rural areas. What specific distinction does the law make between septic and sewer?
Thank you, Counselor. I don't think you'll find it necessarily in GMA. I, I don't think GMA talks a lot about septic. It talks about sewer, and it's defined as an urban service. However, the case law talks about septic as a traditionally rural service.
It is?
Right. So, that distinction, I think, is part of the historic backdrop that has construed GMA in, in the area of services outside the urban growth boundary. And, and that's why I mentioned public health as having authority to review proposals for, you know, large onsite septic systems. And of course, we all know what happened when the cowlets were not able to get a sewer center. They, they built, they pursued authorization from the Environmental Protection Agency for an underground injection well. And that's what they utilized on their land. So, however, that's not probably, I don't know whether that's, that would be viewed as a traditionally rural service. In any event, their land is by now outside GMA jurisdiction. But there are things to look at that are not sewer. And as to whether they're practical or not, given the soils, the slopes, you know, does it perk? All those things that public health looks at, that would be, I would assume, a property-by-property analysis.
Well, thank you, Chris. That's, that's helpful. And I guess one of the things that I'm left concluding is, I'm not hearing from you that there is a distinction in the law that is very clear on the, the rural service of septic and versus sewer. So, if it is simply tradition by which we link these, that's not good enough. It, it has to be more than tradition to where there is real reason that is understood in the law for why sewer would be treated differently. That's my perspective on it.
Well, the law specifically defines sewer as an urban service and says urban services aren't allowed here. So...
But, you know, defining it is kind of picking words from the air often and not a basis in thought and, and, and legal work. So...
Well, it is in the statute.
I know it's there. I've read it. Well...
Chair?
Is that Counselor Young?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Real quick clarifying question. So, when we're talking about sewer versus septic, I'm, I'm learning a lot from this conversation, thank you, by the way. But is there anything in, in, in the law that says that you can or cannot use a septic system if you are a certain type of facility?
Gee, not that I know of.
Okay, so it's essentially, I mean, we don't know for sure because every parcel's different. Like, like you said, percolation testing and stuff like that. But I'm curious if we could get just, and I know it's a stretch, but public health to just kind of give us an idea for what is possible. I mean, are there any specific uses that are just unrealistic to be able to work out with a septic system? Or is, would it be cost prohibitive or, you know, that type of thing? What, what kind of uses are, are likely to be able to use, knowing that it's going to vary depending on the soil and the landscape and everything? But I'm just trying to figure out, like, what the limitation... But I'm just trying to figure out, like, what the limitation would be of not having sewer services available.
Well, I would suggest that you inquire of Public Health. That is not an area in which I can profess to any expertise, whatever.
So I don't know if the remainder of the Council would be interested. I definitely would. So be interested in hearing that.
And every property owner for a permit out in a rural area has to have a perk test. I mean, whatever you think the soils are, whatever the slope is, it boils down to a perk test and engineering on a particular lot. I don't think there's anything to be learned by going back to Public Health on this.
Just a comment on that. I don't know if Public Health, I think there's, you know, we're talking about what would be an industrial, to treat an industrial use, and it wouldn't be your typical household septic system. So there's expertise out there. I don't know if we have it within the county. But I'd be interested in that. All along, I've been interested in what can be achieved within the parameters of the legislation that avoids litigation. So, you know, and where we may not, not everyone may be happy with the legal answers that we're hearing, I think it does take a cautionary approach unless we want, you know, because I think if we're headed to litigation, that's even further delays in anything happening. So I would be definitely interested in knowing what could be feasible within the construct of the legislation as we understand it. And I would just also like to say, I think for the proponents of this, the legislation that was passed does not achieve what they were hoping that it would achieve. And if they want, and that if they want more, they need to go back to the legislature to get clarity on that.
And thank you, Counselor. I think let's establish that we will participate in going to the legislature. At least three of us now have suggested that that would be a good alternative for shortly down the road.
Oh, just to clarify, I don't know that I would be supporting that legislation, but I think if the proponents want clarity, that's the way to get it.
You're right. I should have said approaching the legislators, not the legislation. Are there other questions for Chris? Okay, let's proceed with the-
So I know we're going to do this at the end, but I think maybe it's appropriate now. I mean, if we have three votes to ask our PA basically to frame, what amendments do you think we need to clarify the law? Because as soon as you rely on septic systems, you're going to severely constrain, there are not a whole lot of businesses that are going to build their own wastewater treatment plant. What amendments do we need? And so I think we should start that process right away. I would ask the PA to craft that, and then that would be the draft vehicle for us to discuss with our local legislative delegation and strategy with our lobbyists to get it before the next legislative session.
That's a good idea. And may I suggest that we take that up near the end of this work session when we have all the data that we're going to from today. And I think we can craft that request pretty, pretty well by that time. Would that be acceptable?
Chair Barman, if I may-
Yes.
This is Leslie Lopez. Sorry, my computer's not working, so I'm not on the screen. I just wanted to, I think it would be helpful at the end, then if there are particular questions that you're asking about that you think aren't perhaps in the current legislature, that would be helpful. In other words, and I'm not saying this very clearly, but the questions you have, that the majority of the Council has about the legislation, that we can look at to see whether or not that's contained in the legislation, then we can look at that.
Yeah, so I'm just going to tee it up again. Do we have, is Michelle on board? Do we have three Counselors that want the PA's office to start working on what amendments?
Mary, if you don't mind, let's wait until we get to the end of the work session.
Okay, well, I do mind, but I'll defer to the Chair. I think it's, we're talking about this particular subject right now. Now would be a good time to see if we have support for it.
You are most gracious. We may just have additional info. So that's the only thing. I like things to be thorough. So are there other questions for Chris? Hearing none, let's move forward with the next bullet in the agenda. Staff?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair and Counselors. Good discussion, and I'm anticipating that more will be, we will hear more and get direction from Council. At the March 1st work session, Council also raised the issue of potentially examining the economic viability assessment, including costs and viability, availability issues. I think at the end of this, I will need some direction from Council, and then I'll be, with that direction, I will be reaching out to the County Manager to see how we proceed based on your direction. Right now, we have not reached out to professional consultants who may do that type of work.
And I can just share, I have reached out to WAC to see if they have, because I've not heard back yet from them, and I'll follow up to see if they have a recommendation of somebody who has done this work previously.
Okay, so that was one of the asks. So we done, we will be, I'll wait, and if we hear anything, we will share with the Council and get direction to proceed. That's going to involve some cost, which you Counselors will have to approve. Next slide, please. So from here, I will turn it over to Jose Alvarez, and from time to time, I will be chiming in. These are the land uses that are along the entire length of the rail line. And this particular slide is from Vancouver urban growth boundary, or the northern edge of the Vancouver urban growth boundary to Battleground. And Jose can go over this, and I will be chiming in as we go through this. I think you can see the area that currently the Council approved for the overlay. And Jose, take it away. And I know there are some, there's total parcel acreage breaking down by various land use categories so that the Council can see that. At the end of the day, you will be making a decision whether this goes forward or not, whether the overlay will apply to some of these properties, and how that will happen. I will get into that when we get to the next steps. But Jose, go ahead.
Thank you, Oliver. Counselors, this is one of three maps that breaks down the railroad from the northern edge of the Vancouver UGA to the terminus. So this first section, as Oliver said, is from the northern edge of the Vancouver UGA to the southern edge of the Battleground urban growth area. There's a box on the left-hand side of the map that shows the acreage. So there's a total of 988 acres within that 500-foot distance to the rail line. That's the definition that was used to adopt the first overlay in 2018. And as you can see, there are 413 acres that are Ag 20 designation. The existing overlay is about 300 acres, and it's hard to make out, but there's, the orange parcels are Ag 20, and the horizontal purple stripe is the freight rail dependent use overlay. And it mostly starts from the big parcel on down. There's several other overlays that make it look a little confusing, but that's the, sort of the shape of the overlay. Towards the middle, where these blue parcels are, that's heavy industrial zone property in the Brush Prairie Rural Center. There's about 22, just short of 23 acres that's heavy industrial. Between those two blue parcels is the CR2, which is the commercial within a rural center, and there's about 34 acres of that. There's, there's a school that's a public facility that's just under 10 acres. And then there's 450 acres of R5, which is the bright yellow, and this is yellow to the south that has the overlay, the urban reserve overlay on it, and didn't have the freight rail. And then RC1 is the slightly peach colored, that is one acre minimums in the rural center, and that's about 57 acres in total in this stretch of area. The question about sewer, so because of the way the law's written now, sewer can't extend beyond the urban growth boundary. This is the outline, if you can find my cursor, of the Vancouver UGA. So sewer doesn't extend beyond this area. I think it serves, it goes up to this area here and along 119th. And there may be sewer that's extended on the, on the east side to serve the Lauren. There's two schools just outside of the urban area that I believe are served by sewer. So that's the extent of the sewer in this area. Do you have any questions about this before we move on to the next map?
Would you please put your pointer on the schools that have sewer?
They're out in this area here.
I am not seeing your pointer.
Oh.
I don't think that has.
Ah, there it is. I see it at the top.
Yeah.
Yeah. We may have to-
I'm sorry, say that again.
I would like us to, Jose, I would like us to further verify that.
Sure.
The only thing I will add is that when the previous Council made the decision on where to apply the current overlay, it was a conscious decision not to include properties zoned and designated as rural 5, rural 10, and rural 20. And the reason for that is that it's likely that they have homes on them, and you wouldn't be applying. It doesn't mean that that wouldn't be the case for areas zoned for agriculture or forest, but rural 5 is predominantly for five acres. Some of the lots may be more smaller, but you didn't want to intentionally apply the overlay on where, areas where you know there are currently homes on them. And as you look at, along this line, rail line or this area that we are showing, you can see that predominantly what you have here is rural 5 from Brushberry all the way to the southern Battleground UGA. So that is something to bear in mind for any future work. We haven't studied this area, haven't looked at it, nobody else has looked at this. This is just within 500 feet of the rail line following the previous directive from our Council. So Jose, go ahead.
Do you have an overlay that shows the different, not only the existing sewer districts for, all the way to the terminus, but also proposed expansion? Do we have an overlay over this map available?
Okay, so the sewer districts are confined also by Growth Management Act, and so they don't have any plans outside the urban growth area. They're not allowed to. They have to be consistent with our comprehensive plan and the urban growth areas. So north of Battleground to the terminus, there is no sewer. And there are no plans for sewer because there's no extension of urban growth areas.
Just a moment ago, Oliver said that we'd have to get the additional information on the location and so on of the schools that you had mentioned, Jose, that have sewer, that are out there in that general area. I'd like to see that, that follow-up. I'd like to know where the schools are, and do they in fact have sewer? And is the sewer in a surrounding area as well? How is that mapped out there?
I believe there's-
Yeah, we will have to, Counselor, I would like to get that information. I hope Jose is not referring to Hawkinson High School. Okay, we'll get that information to Counselors.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions about this map? Okay, so the next map is from sort of northeastern end of the Battleground UGA to the Yakult There is, again, about 153 acres of Ag zone property in this area, 3,000 total, 3,024 total acres. The bulk of that is in FR40 and FR80, which makes up about 1,500 of those acres. On the sort of central side, there's also a public facility, not a public facility, but Parks Wildlife, which is this sort of brighter green area. And this is the Lucia Falls Park, and then Molten Falls Park in the bright green area east of there. This map, there's also the Battleground Lake State Park that's where this gray public facilities area, which is about 48 acres. These two green parcels are also part of the state park. And then the remainder is the, is about 651 acres of R5 and 430 acres of R10 zoned land. Again, the bill is dealing primarily with the Ag and forest. This two-dimensional map really doesn't show some of the steep slopes that are on the south side of the railroad. And then there, for citing industrial, there may be some issues with the road, Lucia Falls Road through here. As you get, go up into Battleground, it's mostly R10 zone property, as Urban Reserve writes out of, outside of Yakult. Yakult doesn't have sewer currently. They're still working on that. I believe that covers what I wanted to say about this area. Do you have any questions about this before we move on to the next map?
I have a comment on the previous slide, and this goes back to something that was mentioned. Why was the focus between Battleground and Vancouver? And I think it was the Lagala property and that, I guess, failed attempt to designate the Rural Industrial Land Bank that large area there. So that, and the legislation, I think, the genesis was to bring this property into industrial use. So that's why the focus was to the south.
Okay, so the last stretch of the railroad is from northern end of the Yakult UGA up to the terminus in Chilachi. There, again, there are no urban services, public water lines, or sewer in this area. The, there's 1,800 acres in this area, 240 Ag 20. FR40 is about 470 acres, almost 700 acres of FR80. There's 45 acres of heavy industrial at the Chilachi terminus there. And then the rest is R10, R5, and RC2.5, which is part of the Chilachi Prairie Rural Center, and the sort of the peach-like colored properties just outside of the heavy industrial area.
Can we pause on this slide? And I'm wondering if, how easy it is to see an overlay of where surface mines are presently overlaid, and if, following on from yesterday's comment- And if, following on from yesterday's comment, if there's some progress we could make in updating our surface overlay, this is certainly the area where we need to focus. I understand that warehouses kind of going through that process right now on their properties, looking for something other than timber that they may want to carve out from the conservation effort that's going on up there. But so from timber to, to surface mining overlays, do we have that available? And is that something we could make progress on as far as surface mining to update?
Councillor, there are two ways to change the surface mining overlay on property. One is a countywide effort, and the other is if the landowner specifically requests for the overlay to be on their property. So that's just a process thought. I don't think that the county could just say, yep, couple on the rail line here, let's do them without, without fault unless it falls within one of those two process sorts.
So let me rephrase it then, and looking at, I guess we're still waiting on DNR's updating of their mapping of potential locations. I mean, that would be good to have for the public, property owners, and the county to see an overlay in conjunction with the railroad.
I don't have, this is Oliver again, councillors, I don't have anything to add from Ms. Crook's observation that there are two ways property owner initiated, and then a countywide. As I mentioned last night, and as I continue to mention, we have to have the basis to do this countywide. The two thousand and five aggregate resource map from DNR is very old. I cannot use that as the basis to start a conversation on updating the, our mineral resource land. So it's going to be based on what new information do you have in terms of mapping, particularly from DNR? My understanding is that they're working on it, and when they are done, then they will provide that to all the counties. And we will, there will be, there will be effective date for us to complete that process. The same thing that they do now with what they're calling myla, mapping on unstable slopes area, given the landslide, the also landslide. So they're doing that not only for Snohomish, but all the other counties in terms of unstable slopes area. So they have their hands full from what they're telling me. So I need to have a basis for us to move forward to do it countywide. That's all I'm sharing with council. I don't have that yet.
Chair, just a comment. It looks like there are a couple of areas already have that surface mining overlay district, including one right next to the current heavy industrial zoned area. Of that, up in Chilachi where it's currently zoned heavy industrial, you know, that's, you know, the reason, it's logging, that is the reason that the railroad exists, and there were no sewage treatment plants. And there aren't any now to serve that area that's currently heavy industrial. And I can't, again, I can't foresee a line going all the way up to Chilachi. So I think if we can find ways to have industrial without, with some other alternative onsite sewage treatment, I think that's the only way that we could achieve anything.
You are correct, and that is why we presented this. And as I indicated in the beginning, there is no analysis of what is feasible and what isn't in terms of slopes, in terms of critical areas, in terms of what are the properties and avoidance, if you will. None of that had been done for this area. You are correct, the town of Yakult doesn't have sewer. So neither do areas not of battleground. Battleground system, I can say publicly, is very limited. So we have some issues when it comes to, even if it's feasible to provide sewer, how would that even occur?
I have been contacted by an attorney for Clark Regional who wanted to know what the county was doing, but couldn't tell me what Clark Regional would be thinking or doing. But, you know, in general, they're the provider, and they provide consistent with their comprehensive plan, which is supposed to be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. So that would be another entity that council might want to ask for information about this as to whether sewer could be extended along the rail line and what the economic feasibility of that would be.
Are you saying that they contacted you while we're doing this presentation or just in the past?
Oh, not while we're doing the presentation. I don't know whether it was about three weeks ago or what.
Yeah, I was hoping that we would have that information, that we had that working relationship. But I'm experiencing this with broadband and the different entities that have their own proprietary close hold on their future plans. But I'm hoping we can breach that gap and get, find out what's going on within the cities, Yakult, Amboy, and any future plans for extension.
There is no sewer in Yakult. It's been voted down. It still doesn't exist. Amboy is not a city. It's a rural center. There's no sewer there and no plans.
Councillors, if I may, I also spoke with staff from Clark Regional yesterday, to be honest, and they are watching. And I've asked them whether they are legal, councillor, have any opinion? None, but they're just watching to see what the council would agree with Chris, that they may be an entity to talk to, but their plans has to be consistent with the county comprehensive plan. They cannot just go out there willingly installing sewer lines.
Yeah, so that's the chicken and egg issue. So right now, the only sewer we have in that area is within Battleground.
I will also add, councillors, that we did not show you areas where the rail line are in the urban growth boundary, which would be the northern edge of the Vancouver UGA to where it rejoins the BNFs. That is in the urban area, and there are no issues when it comes to sewer because that area is already in the urban growth boundary.
And you have a map of that, of the places that's designated?
I mean, where sewers are now, we can provide that, GIS can map that and provide it to council.
I think that would be good for us to see. Yes, thank you.
Basically, it's Vancouver and Battleground.
Oh, I see. Maybe a little area, little area outside of both, but not much. I hear you.
Next slide.
I would just like to thank you. These maps are really very helpful, and as I look at them, you know, I think a lot of the conflicts seem pretty apparent. And it'd be helpful to just kind of make some policy decisions related to where the areas we don't want to conflict with. So this will help with that.
So councillor, these were the options that were presented to council in 2019 after meetings with the advisory board, the open house, to kind of get direction on how to proceed with implementation of the bill. There were six options. I believe the council was, gave us direction on option four, which was to proceed with the development regulations. And they wanted, again, like I think mentioned earlier, the advisory board developed the use list and the, whether it's permitted or conditional. I think council had directed staff to come up with something to have more protection on the heavy industrial. And so that's what was included in the development regulations that was provided to you March 3rd. But these were the range of options that they considered at the time, and that's what we were going to move forward through the legislative process with. Oliver, do you have anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add. Like I said earlier, the draft development regulations have not been vetted through the public process. And the direction at the time was to go through the legislative process that include work sessions and hearing with the planning commission. We did extensive public outreach, open houses, and shared the proposed use list with the community out there. There were, you know, if you visit our website, you will see all the work that was done, the survey and other approaches that we have taken. But in terms of going to a hearing, the draft proposal and the use list have not seen the light of the day in terms of overall community weighing in on what was proposed.
Is the draft proposal prepared for option four also online?
Yes.
Yes, it is on the, if it's not on the council grid, it is on the project website.
Yes.
So I'm unclear, is it the Railroad Committee, option six, that made a recommendation? And what is that recommendation? I didn't quite understand that.
So the, the committee made a recommendation on the, all of the development standards, and they also included an expansion of the map area to a one-mile radius. Council at the time directed staff to not go forward with that one-mile radius map, but to stick with the map that was adopted January 9th. The development regulations include the, the recommendations from the committee. And then for the use list table, there was another column that was added to address the heavy industrial. And trying to, a lot of those were permitted outright. We recommended a lot of them being either conditional or not permitted. And then the, there were some other minor changes to, there were provisions that the committee came up with that added language to our code that dealing with sewer. We got a letter from the wastewater district that didn't think that language was, they preferred another language, so we made those corrections in those sections. And that's sort of, that combination is what's reflected in the development standards that we provided to you. That, the advisory board recommendations were taken out to the public and the open house, and people were, had the opportunity to comment on that. And that informed some of the changes that were made at the behest of council at the time.
So these options are from five years ago. These aren't options that you just came up with for this presentation. These are old options.
Yes.
Yeah, that was, yeah, and it's still relevant. And that's why we are sharing it with this council because that's where we started.
And just a clarification, this was for the area that was identified at that time for freight rail dependent use. So it was geographically a relatively small area.
Yes, it was.
It was the January 9th overlay, which was adopted in 2018. That's approximately three hundred acres.
Twenty nineteen, I think.
Yes.
And how much of that was agricultural land?
I don't have the total acreage. I know that the entire area was close to three hundred acres. I would not be surprised if two hundred of that, or maybe a hundred and ninety plus, I don't want to guess, would be close to. Jose, do you have the information of how many of that?
It was, it was all, all of the three hundred acres were Ag because we excluded the R5, which is the only other zoning.
Thank you.
Has there been any requests from the advisory committee for follow-up on option four since things are opening up again for discussion?
I don't think so, and I know that some members are here. I think their position have always been for us to share with council their recommendation, and I believe we have done so. So I know that some of them are in the audience, but their recommendation is what we are really sharing with the council. The only, as Jose mentioned, what the councillors at the time did not advance is the one-mile radius which on the map they recommended. The council said no to that, and some of the changes that were made to the actual use list.
So are we at the point where we provide guidance?
I am going to go to the next steps quickly. Here, if the council decides or directs that we move forward, this, in my professional opinion, is what I will present to the council, that we have to develop a potential scope of work. As you see on the maps, I don't know what the direction of the council is going to be. Those areas have not been thoroughly looked at or studied. So it's going to require us reaching out to folks that, you know, have some experience with railroad to help us out in that process. You may direct us to engage with the railroad advisory board or a different task force. No environmental review have been done, not only on any future areas that the overlay may apply, but as well as this use list that we have, that we have shared with you. No super work had been done on that. There's going to also be additional, in my opinion, additional public participation. And then through that, we'll have to go back to the planning commission through hearings and work sessions, and then coming back to council for your own work session and consideration of the recommendation of the PC. I added the last bullet there, not to scare the council, but to be very frank, that whatever decision that you make, there is potential of appealing the county decision. That is something that the council has to weigh in. As I mentioned in phase one, not to brag about it, but I was happy that when we did phase one, it was not appealed. And I want to, I would like staff to do this work minimizing the risk and exposure to the council. So that's really what I'm looking at in terms of the next steps.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude the staff report?
Yes, councillors.
Well, if there are any questions, this is the time for them, and then we'll move to the committee recommendations. Or the council recommendations, pardon me. Okay, let's do the latter. I know someone who is ready to give one. Councillor Medvigi.
Well, I saw councillor Young reaching for his button, but I'm happy to go first. I think first and foremost, because we're five years behind the power curve here, I would like that we provide direction to the P. would like that we provide direction to the PA's office to prepare the amendments that are necessary to clarify this law. I mean, as soon as the question came up, the council should have gone back, or the commission at the time should have gone back to the legislature and say, it's really hard to deal with this right now with all the ambiguity we have over what looks like urban services along this rail line. So I would, that's number one. Number two, I would like that we update our options. But, you know, until we answer the basic question of, is this an exception for sewer outside the urban growth, growth boundary, I, I think we're, we're always going to be in the snowman's land. The other general thought I have is, we absolutely need to start, restart the public process. I don't want to get appealed at some level, so I, we obviously rely on community development to do this right. And the last comment is, I want to do this to the end of the railroad, not the battleground, all the way to the end, as far as the public process and identifying properties that may be buildable. You know, the law itself prohibits oil products and rendering, I think. That may have been our own, I, I think it came from the state law, where you can't have rendering plants. I mean, there are restrictions that came with, with, with the law itself, but I'm not sure what heavy industrial we additionally want to eliminate. So my position is, I'd like to look, take a little closer look at that, not just broadly say no heavy industrial or rail industrial. I would like to look at what would the county consider in the way of rail industrial or heavy industrial, not just blanket say no, that, that can't exist here in Clark County. Maybe that is the ultimate decision, but I wouldn't want to just blanket, because I don't know those individual uses. I mean, there's some fine lines as far as available uses between heavy industrial, light industrial, rail industrial. They all have different definitions. That's my list.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'd, I'd like to number your item in terms of the communication with the PA's office on amendments that we need in order to clarify the law as number one, okay? So I'm wondering how many councillors agree that number one would be an appropriate follow-up from council to give as direction? I do. I'm numbered, I'm the second councillor, I guess. Are there others?
I do as well, councillor, or chair.
That's okay. Okay, that's three of us.
Chair, Chair Bowerman, this is Leslie Lopez. So I just want to clarify, typically, the PA's office is not necessarily involved in the legislative process in terms of the RCW. This sounds more like a policy decision by the council in terms of how the, a majority would want the statute to define something, so this seems more in line with the policy analyst. What our office could do is to flag the areas, which I think we have, flag the areas that are ambiguous, and then the council would need to sort of discuss how they would want those defined. In other words, if we're talking about, you know, if they want, if you want language that says outs, you know, you want to extend it outside the growth boundary, for instance, or you want a certain definition defined. That's not necessarily a legal question for our office, because we would not be proposing certain legislation that would be more of a policy analyst position.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that distinction, and basically, that's all I was asking for, you know, the legal issues that we've all discussed previously, and Christine Cook focused on this morning, you know, what are the legal issues? And then, once we have a policy analyst, we'll take it on as far as what we would like to, how we'd like to couch that with our legislative delegation and the legislature.
Okay, thank you. With that sort of definition, our office will flag the specific areas that, you know, cause some sort of ambiguity, or don't have something that, you know, definitively states what's happening there. If the council could perhaps as well, based on this conversation, maybe address some of those, you know, let us know the ones that you flagged, we can also write those down.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, the sewer question's a big one. Adjacency, I mean, that was some, something I would like to see them define if they can or are willing. Those are the two big ones.
Chair, I would just suggest that this would be appropriate for the proponents who worked on the original legislation to advance. We could inform them based on the conversation that we have in areas that we feel are problematic. And, you know, the other issue in my mind legislatively, I don't, I don't think, I don't know that there's a rule against this, but this is basically legislation that was adopted for, for Clark County, for one particular railroad, and there was attempts to do it statewide, but that just seems to me to be an issue too, how successful we might be, or they might be, you know, given that it's just one county, one particular railroad that this statewide legislation would apply to.
I'd like to return to Councilor Medviji, if we may. From your discussion about what you wanted to see followed up on, I honestly did not pick up a number two. Is there a second item that you have in there in addition to the communication with the PA?
So we saw six, six options that were five years old, and perhaps they'll be couched by the work that we do with the legislature, but I would like to update the options for us, so we can come back and say, hey, community development, we're voting on this, this is the new policy direction. Related to that is development, planning, out to the terminus, not just to battleground. And, and the only other side comment I made is, we need a full public process as we move forward to engage, especially if we do decide to go out the Alcoa and Amboy area to the terminus. I mean, that's a part of the public that we didn't hear from, the rural area north of, northeast of battleground.
Yes, I'll label that number two, if I may, an update of the six options that had been presented in 2019. Exactly related to that, and an expansion of what you said, I'd like to see a resurfacing, particularly on option four, so that the meaning and intent behind that is really exposed to us currently, because it seems like that offers some clarity of thought, at least from 2019, that could be very helpful to us now. So I'd like to see that incorporated into the update on options presented. And that is our number two, unless anyone else has anything to add to that.
Chair?
Okay, is there, actually, I-
I think there's, there's a couple more comments that need to be made. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm kind of struggling a little bit with whether our position right here. I probably would be okay and supportive of moving forward with what we've discussed at this point, but I look at this as a giant business decision. This is, this is what it is. You know, it's a business decision. Do we choose to invest for, in hopes of a, of a return that's larger than our investment? But the way I look at it right now, it's, you know, kind of like looking at a house that's all beat up and rundown, and looking at it and saying, you know what, we could restore this, it would be as beautiful as when it was first built, maybe even better than that, and then proceeding on to buy it, not having investigated what exactly is wrong with it, how much it would cost to fix it. And then the, the last, in my opinion, most important thing is, if, you know, if you're, if you buy it for a hundred thousand, and you put 400,000 into it, is it worth more than 500,000 when you're done? So I'm okay moving forward with some of these small steps to, that are investigative, but I'm definitely not supporting moving forward with this until we have a significant economic study done on this. So we need to know, how much is that sewer going to cost to put in? I mean, if it's 40, 50 million dollars to put a sewer in that only serves five properties, because that's the only people that choose to use the services along the rail, that's not a good decision. I would like to know, in, you know, in terms of dollars and cents, what, what is this going to do for the county? What are the expenses going to be? What are the, what will the revenue be to the county? How are we going to offset those costs? You know, cost recovery methods that might be available? And then also, you know, a study of what is this going to do for our region is, because there are, I mean, the, the impacts are much more than just that revenue from those businesses. So those are the kinds of things that I'm looking at before I would consider moving forward in any capacity with, you know, more heavy, more, more expensive things, or giving a green light to move ahead with this project. So I just can't say enough how important it is to predetermine approximately, and there's going to be risk in something like this, there's a risk in any business investment, but you need to have a mitigated risk, an educated risk. So I need that information before I will support moving forward in any large capacity.
Councilor Young, I don't know, but I would suspect that all of us are on that same page. And we certainly can't know cost until, of the sewer, until we know more about, is a sewer allowed? Where is it allowed? How long can it be? All kinds of, of questions there. I mean, otherwise, we know, just with general topography, how much a sewer costs. So, but the specifics of it, which is what we would need to have for decision-making, I think are going to have to come after we develop this further. Would that resonate with you too?
And Madam Chair, I'd point out, and I think I've sent it to all the councillors, there's some great documents out there on economic development on Washington State's railroads. That also talks about our short line. I mean, they're already published, they've already been researched, it kind of shows that business model information. Creative might have some local information as well. But I would just, if you didn't receive that from me months ago, I'll try to dig it up and send it to you again, otherwise, I just encourage you to read it, because I think it'll answer a lot of your questions.
Councilor, if you would not mind doing that, or asking staff to do that in your behalf, I think that'd be helpful. It's probably buried in our email, available, but hard to find, so that would be great.
Chair, I just have one quick comment, and I would be interested in knowing what industrial uses could be accomplished without sewer.
Just one more thing to add to that too, and I appreciate that comment about that document, but it's similar to the discussion that we just recently had on population projection, is that I don't think it took everything into account that's here locally. I mean, we have 503, a crossing over 503 that we have to contend with. We have multiple other cross, smaller crossings, and we know there's grant funding available, but how far will those grants go? You know, how much are these things going to cost? So I, I agree in the concept that this can be an economic driver, and it can, it can bring a positive thing to the community, but again, you have to evaluate the cost versus reward, and then on top of that, impact, the impact that it's going to have on people that live near it. So, thank you.
I had just a third, I'm sorry, someone else spoke. Go ahead.
I, I was going to say, that's a great point. I brought it up before, you know, there is money right now, federal money, for those crossings, safety crossings. And when we brought it up to staff before, it was basically, well, we're not there yet. But that's kind of the future planning, future preparation. We should be applying for those grants right now and improving every single crossing that we have, just for today's safety. I mean, we have trains moving five miles an hour, 10 miles an hour, once a day or so, but that's the kind of thing we should be, within our capacity, applying for grants and identifying those railroad crossings, and doing that, those improvements right now.
Thank you. I had a, unless there's more comments on that. I had a number three item to add to the list. This is a quick one, because we discussed it previously. The comment that two schools down there have sewer in the Chilachi Railroad area, and maybe that was slide four of nine on, on your, in your deck, Jose, I'm not sure, but at any rate, knowing their names, their locations, the surrounding area, more about how this sewer came about for those schools, and anything that's in the surrounding area, that would be, I, something that I would really appreciate information on as a number three.
Madam Chair, hold on, we're, we're getting comments from the off, audience. Can we have someone come forward to the mic in answer to what you just stated? Madam Chair said, okay.
Yeah, so just a caution, and I understand, before the gentleman responds, rules of procedure does say no public comment during work sessions, and if you're going to offer this for one individual, it's something that you would have to open up for.
So Madam Chair, I recommend that perhaps you pass the information to either our manager, county deputy manager, or Oliver. Thank you. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Okay.
Chair, it looks like you might be muted. So we still can't hear you, Chair.
Oh.
There you are, you're here, you're back, thank you.
Hello. So I, I hear you as to the importance of getting information passed along, which I'm more than happy to do. I'm just not sure what information you're referring to.
Councillors, if I may, this is Oliver. We will follow up with the gentleman about the information about the two schools, their names and the surrounding area. That's the information that he will pass on to us or to the county manager.
Great.
Thank you, Oliver. And Madam Chair, I support your number three.
Information on the map, where they're located, et cetera. Councilor Medviji?
I was just saying, I support your number three.
Thank you. Are there, is there a third?
I, I support that as well.
All righty. Now, what else do we wish to state as far as council direction?
Chair, I think the issue of an economic analysis still needs to be addressed, from my understanding. I believe that Oliver asked that, or mentioned at the beginning, that he wanted to receive direction, because there would be cost to that.
And Chair, I suggested, although there might not be three councillors that agree with me, but to look into what could be accomplished in terms of industrial development without sewer.
Yes, I, I made note of that, and I think that's listed in some of the use lists as well, so we should have good coverage on that.
Great, thank you.
Chair?
Does anyone-
Chair, if I could just-
Does anyone-
This is Kathleen. No, I just wanted, as you guys are talking about this, just for clarification for myself and staff, so we'll certainly look at the amendments that could be provided. With regards to updates to the options, do you want us to just do a preliminary, and update was already presented, until we get that clarification in the legislature? So we're not putting in a lot of work before we actually know what to go forward?
Having watched the legislature work for a while, and just see their special session, I think we should have updated options, as best as we can recouch them, in anticipation that we're not going to have a remedy from the legislature anytime soon. We might, we may get a stiff arm right away from our local delegation. I don't know what kind of reception we're going to get. So I think we need to, as a council, make decisions, as hard as they may be, in the absence of resolution by the legislature. So I think we need options.
Again, noting the importance of full development on option four, since that was a paper that's online, and has quite a bit of history behind it, and that will be informative as a part of that update.
Okay, so maybe what we can do, we can brainstorm what's already been done, what could, what's options that could happen, such as some uses that don't require sewer, that does not require legislative action or change, and then we can identify which one should, you know, that's recommended to wait until we get some sort of direction or input from our legislative delegates. And I do want to note, too, that, you know, as we move forward with this process, we're fully committed to supporting the council, and I've mentioned this before in prior work sessions, that Oliver's group does have the comp plan update, so if we're going to be implementing and going full speed ahead, we will be recommending to bring in outside help for that. Their staff does not have capacity, but we're, we'll find the funding.
Outside help for what, Kathleen?
If we move forward implementing and developing the, the key long-term goal of implementing this legislation, that's going to take significant staff time. Well, Oliver and I will brainstorm when that would happen, and when we would recommend it, to make sure that we have a dedicated FTE supporting this.
Thank you. Are there, is there a fourth major item that council wishes to add to the list of recommendations?
Chair, I just want to clarify, is there an economic study on that list currently?
There is not. You did bring it up, I didn't hear anyone vouch along with you for that.
I, I would support that.
And what is the economic analysis of? I know that's, sounds like an odd question, but I've seen some, have done some economic analyses of cities, and they were maybe a thousand pages, you know, to give you an idea, because they went into all of the innuendos of what the developments could be, and on and on. Or are, what are you thinking of?
Well, again, an economic analysis of what it will cost the county, you know, what the impacts will be, what methods of cost recovery there will be, and what economic benefits and revenue that it potentially could bring to the county. And that would include all the infrastructure that would need to be built, and who would build it, who would pay for it, and the impacts associated with it. I mean, that, I think, in general, would be what I would be asking for. I want to make sure that it pencils out reasonably as a project before we invest any heavy resources into this.
That is a large economic analysis, if done well. By the time you get into estimates on all the infrastructure, you know where the infrastructure is, and you know what it is exactly that you're going to need to develop, and then you get your pricing and so on, that is really comprehensive. I'm not sure that we're ready for that. I know that it has two votes at this time, but I, not mine, for the reason you just mentioned.
If I, if I could just clarify, in my mind, I think maybe not as large an economic study, but I think it would be good for the public to understand what are the likely industries that could be, that realistically could be cited along there, just to, and what jobs would those bring in? I think just maybe looking at it in more simple terms, that informs the public about what the impact would be, and what, because I think for the county, it wasn't so much that this was a revenue generating for the county, but in, but the benefit would be jobs created, and the overall economic benefit of that, so some sense of what that would look like.
Does that comport with your thoughts, Counselor Young?
I think it's right there along with, I mean, it doesn't have to be an exhaustive study, but we need to understand what it's going to cost, and generally, what we can expect as a benefit from it.
So those generic questions, as I said, are, have been well analyzed nationally, at the state level, by previous documents, and just to echo what you just said, we are not there yet. We don't have a specific project, or specific right and left limit of what we're looking at yet. I mean, I, at this point, the most I would support is, what would it cost to hire a consultant, should we get to that point, to do that kind of study or analysis? I, I think it's just a round peg in a square hole at this point in time.
Well, I guess I would just say-
Go ahead.
What has been suggested or identified so far that I have heard is an asphalt plant, a cement plant, aggregate, and garbage.
And the point being?
Well, the point being, it would be good to understand what additionally could come, come in, and, and even with those industries, I'm not saying those are necessarily bad industries, but what jobs do those bring in? How does it benefit, if our aspiration was to create jobs, you know, what, what kind of jobs are they creating? I, I don't know personally.
So it sounds like we're just stalling right now. Let's move forward, and if we need an economic study at some point, we'll figure out how much it'll cost to hire a consultant, but I just don't see the point right now.
Chief Counselor Medviji, are you, as a council, though, willing to support the idea of investigating the jobs that could be created, and the benefit that they could bring, along with the cost, to the county?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That effort should be ongoing right now, with our railroad operator, with our economic development team in Vancouver, that work is already being done. The problem is, there can be no progress until potential builders, developers, businesses know that they're going to be able to move in. So, I mean, it's kind of the chicken and the egg. We need to zone it, we need to get this law into place, before we're really going to know what kind of great businesses we can attract. Not the ones that Counselor Marshall just highlighted, because people do that to be dismissive about the potential for the railroad, and, and not to be dismissive about the businesses she mentioned. Some of them are great operators, and will bring revenue and good-paying jobs to this county, potentially.
So basically, I'm, I'm not hearing support for this item in a clear way. Well, are the three items that we have now going to be the totality, then, of what we recommend as a council from today's work session? And then we follow this up with various information, maybe another work session, Kathleen? Is that what you see in the future?
We'll look to see if it's work session, or if, if we can put on council time.
Very good.
Chair, can I, can I ask a clarifying question real quick?
Thank you, Counselor Young.
To, to the council, so I, perhaps we're misunderstanding each other. I'm, I'm seeking to understand what council's apprehension to a study, an economic study on this would be.
Well, speaking for myself, I have absolutely no apprehension. I love doing them, and I'd be delighted to crank out one of those thousand-page reports. They're, they're a joy to do, they're fun to research, they're fun to put together, but I don't think this is the time. And that can come when we know more about where we're headed. That's my perspective.
Chair, I have a few comments. As Counselor Medviji mentioned earlier, he, I, I did read through that comprehensive study that you sent us all, Counselor Medviji, and that was right after we were sworn in, so I'm sure it is buried in each of our emails, but I did go through it and read it. It was very interesting and enlightening, as this, you know, this entire thing is all brand-new to the newbie councillors, so I appreciate that. But there are, there's a lot of really great information that we can regionally relate to. So, that's my opinion.
Good, thank you, because that's a good push for us to be sure that we reread what Counselor Medviji sends. I believe that that is, those are the three items that we wish to stand on coming out of today's session, and my understanding is that we may follow up with a work session, or with council time. I'm sure we'll be hearing a great deal about the topic in, in general, so in, whether it be in one-on-ones, or whatever. So is, are there any other staff comments, or councillor comments?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, thank you. With that, I believe this work session is concluded for the day, and it's been quite informative, and we will take a very short break. It is 11:03. We have council time coming up, followed by three or four bits of executive session. So there being quite a little ways to go, I'm going to propose a 10-minute break, and would like to see you back in the hearing room at 11:13.